Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is Order of Business for December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's an electronically held meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, and it's a virtual meeting. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yeah, council members, just a reminder to state your city, county, and state where you're currently located. Um, David Bella.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Uh, Zoo here, Algo Hawk.
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Um, Mo Baydun is absent today. Robert Coniston. Is absent at the moment. Um, Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Winslow.
Here in the great holly jolly city of Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County.
Um, Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I will have Councilman Winslow lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One, please be seated. Next on the agenda is oath of office is going to be administered by Judge Turfy. This will be for the council and the mayor for your term ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Let's unmute Judge Turf.
He's good.
Right, can you hear me? Yeah, there we go. Okay.
Hi, Judge.
No, some people like me to stay muted. Um, okay, we're gonna do this all at once, or how do you want me to do it?
I don't care, whatever you prefer.
It's up to you guys. I'm, I'm at your disposal.
I think we'd like separate judge. Each, okay? Thank you.
Who's first up?
That would be Mayor Basi.
I know it was, is he on? I don't see him there. Oh, there you go, Mayor. Okay.
Let me unmute you. Okay.
Ready, Mayor?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. After I state I, state your name. I.
I, Bill Basi.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
As an ordinance in for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And that will, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of mayor.
I will faithfully fill the office of the mayor of Dearborn Heights.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
And Clerk, you wanna be next?
Yes, please.
Please raise your right hand. I.
I, Lynn Senya.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinances in and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of city, Dearborn Heights City Clerk.
Then I will faithfully, what was that again?
You will before faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the dirty duties of the city clerk for Dearborn Heights.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk? Do you have a list of the people that still need to be sworn in?
Well, let me see. I have, um, next Lisa Hicks Clayton, oops. Um, Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton. There she is.
And our treasurer, okay.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening. Raise your, raise your right hand, please.
Yes.
I.
I, Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the ordinances in and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And the ordinance in and for the city of Dearborn Heights.
And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Dearborn Heights Treasurer.
I will faithfully perform the duties of the treasurer for city of Dearborn Heights.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
According to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Then I have, um, Nancy Brier.
I think she need, there you go.
I did it last night.
Oh, okay. I did not know that. Okay.
Hassan.
I, I only charge one price.
I knew Hassan did. I did not know you did.
I did also.
Okay, then we have, um, Robert Coniston. But I don't see that he is here. Georgie Ann, do you see him?
If you're here.
I don't see him.
No, I don't. I don't see him in the list.
Okay, um, and then Tom Winslow, but he might have made other arrangements.
Yes.
Okay, so I guess you're done, Judge. Thank you.
You're more than welcome. And congratulations, everybody.
Thank you, Judge.
Dana, did you have something? Your hand is up.
Yes, just quickly, I just wanted to say that, uh, Councilman, uh, Mo Baydun wanted me to let everyone know that his flight got delayed, so he couldn't get on the Zoom meeting. So he apologizes for that, and Merry Christmas to everyone from him. Thank you.
At this time, we will move on. Next, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the electronically held regular meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as submitted.
Support.
Or by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I have approval of minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the electronically held regular meeting on November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one as outlined in for a. Support.
Or by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. This is agenda items only. The limit is two minutes. Council cannot answer you back. All you can do is just speak. And we have Treasurer Hicks Clayton.
Good evening. Thank you. I was waiting to be unmuted, pushing, pointing that button. Um, good evening, council members. I wanted to address seven eight real quick with a, something to ask of you. Uh, would you please, if you make the motion, would you make the motion include adding the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant? And for the treasurer to make the payment of one hundred thousand dollars towards the purchase of the fire truck? So again, if you remember, and it's included in the paperwork and the backup, but over five hundred thousand of that is being financed. But that left the hundred thousand that was coming out of capital outlay that out of the fire department's budget, which is general ledger one zero one three three five nine eight one point zero zero zero. And that was approved in your annual budget, but, uh, we'd like to ask you to please include that in the motion this evening. Thank you.
Next, we have James Allen. You have two minutes.
Good evening. I apologize in advance for, uh, the state of my voice. Um, I'll be brief. Um, I want to thank the voters of the city of Dearborn Heights. Given the fact that prior to the, uh, general election, there was a very cynical, uh, agenda item, I think, that was, uh, inserted regarding me that's been reinserted tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is items on today's agenda in real time. I understand where you're going, but we have to have limited to just today's agenda.
Well, I'm talking about the, uh, agenda item that concerns condemnation of me. Um, my partners have spoken to this in a prior meeting, um, but the agenda item is factually inaccurate. I've never once had an inappropriate, um, uh, exchange with Mr. Blackwell. Mr. Blackwell has attacked me, has spent two years attacking the members of my firm, the people closest to me. Um, uh, I, I have made a public statement regarding that. Um, but he is, he attacked me with, uh, in the name of an Arab American woman with an anti-Semitic trope. Um, and, and, um, he's now claiming to be a victim. When Mr. Blackwell wants to be a victim, he's Mr. Blackwell. He'll be on this call undoubtedly tonight under an alias. He won't show with his real name because he's a coward and a grifter. Um, and council should not be deceived by what this person's doing. And if it's having an impact on the people of the city of Dearborn Heights, your neighbor to the south, Inkster, has spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on litigation involving this man. That's money that we can't spend on fire services in Inkster. And as a result, when you get called on mutual aid, it's happening because of the activities of this man. Now, I'm confident that the voters of Dearborn Heights have spoken, people who've, who have supported me prior to the election, received high vote counts, the people who didn't.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Next, we have Mike Blackburn. And it is a two-minute limit, and it is limited to agenda items only. Go ahead, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is on nine F. Um, I am urging council to vote no on nine F and reject it. It seems like everybody at the top is getting a lot of money, and there's gonna be nothing left for the bottom. I have a bad feeling that when the audit comes back, the odds go come back, uh, bad, and, um, there are already department heads that got thirty-seven percent raises. There's no act, actuary done as to what's this go cost to say in the future. So act, act, actuary, um, done, done on this. I think it's gonna cost to say a lot of money. I don't think the city can afford it. Um, there's a lot of good people that have left the city already. Um, there are some good people that are planning on leaving if their contract doesn't go right, and what happens at this meeting tonight? Because they feel they are getting the, excuse my language, but the shit ended in the stick. Um, and I categorically urge the city council to vote no on it. Um, they'll be back in two years as, a- as you know, for another, uh, rec- recommendation. It can be revisited in two years, and thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Henry.
Yeah, here are you. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Um, thanks for, thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the, uh, compensation committee. I just want to point out that when, uh, Gary makes his presentation, that even if it's approved, that will put us in the, in about the middle of the pack in light communities. And if those communities that we can, did the comparison to decide to allow for cost of living, et cetera, it will put us again back at the bottom of compensation for our elected officials. It's been a long time. We need to recognize the work that our people do, and we need to reward them for their work and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rose Trippe.
Hey. I would like to see no one get a raise until the employees of this city get a contract. It's a shame that the employees don't get a thing, and everybody at the top wants more money. You knew what you were getting when you ran for office. If it's not enough, move on somewhere else where they're making more money. These people in this city need to have a contract and need to be compensated for what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Sam. Next, I have Sam. I guess we'll move on. They're maybe not there on the screen. Okay, next, I have Charles Blackwell. You have two minutes. Go ahead, please.
Hello, yes. My name is, uh, Charles Blackwell, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I would like to state about ordinance eleven A. I am encouraging the city council to terminate the contract with Allen Brothers in light of James Allen's disparaging and offensive emails that he sent. This is not a he said, she said situation. I have presented proof of what James Allen has said and did. James Allen is using his minions to spread false rumors without any proof or evidence. I have never stated anything about James Allen's father, children, or anyone else. If he has proof or evidence of that, I encourage him to release it tomorrow. He can't because there is no evidence. I have provided evidence. In a light of my evidence, I am encouraging the council to terminate his contract. Thank you.
Next, I have Dearborn Heights Host.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Mariana Hernandez. City of Dearborn Heights, North Lafayette, Wayne County, Michigan. I just wanted to, uh, correct a small typo that we have on item nine C. Um, we have to remove the words Microsoft three sixty-five, Adobe acrobated. It's not related with, um, Microsoft three sixty-five. So I just wanted to correct that in the, in the motion.
Yeah, we do have an amended agenda in front of us. It is removed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment before we go on to the rest of the meeting? Okay. At this time, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council per approve current claim six one through six forty-eight as submitted.
Support.
Or by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, I have consideration for bids. This is Treasurer Hicks Clayton bid award for financial institutions financing the purchase of a fire truck.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded the bid to Comerica Bank for the financing of a fire truck in the amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven, as they were the lowest qualified bidder. In addition, adopt the resolution authorizing installment purchase agreement and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign installment purchase agreement on behalf of the city. In addition, uh, authorize the treasurer to make a payment of one hundred thousand dollars towards the payment of the fire truck as outlined in item seven A.
Support.
Or by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have DPW Director Conrad bid award for HVAC maintenance agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council awarded the bid for a new HVAC maintenance agreement to Allied Building Services as they are the lowest qualified bidder and authorize the comptroller's office to return all bid bonds to unsuccessful bidders. In addition, authorize the mayor and the clerk sign the agreement on behalf of the city, subject to review and approval by Corporation Council. Furthermore, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant upon receipt and authorize the treasurer to issue payment as outlined in item seven B.
Support.
Or by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, number one, I was reading through this, and, uh, again, I'm not thrilled with these maintenance agreements. It doesn't tell me what I get. It gives me a schedule for winter, spring, summer, fall. What do I get? Do I get a free belt? Do I get free oil? Do I get a discount on, on, uh, uh, any refrigerant that's gonna be used? Nothing is spelled out in this. Uh, I think we should, uh, uh, move this or table this to another session to see if what we get. Uh, all I got here was a standard contract, and it tells me nothing about what I'm receiving on a service contract. Service contracts should offer me something. Okay, either we're gonna get a reduced rate, uh, if we're gonna get some, uh, maintenance parts at a reduced rate. Uh, whatever it is, uh, we need to find, need to know this before I, I can approve this.
Madam Chair.
That shows me nothing.
Councilman Abdullah.
Um, it, it does say under the services covered. I mean, this is basically in general from what I read. Um, you know, somewhat similar to what you get on cars when you take your car in, they tell you you're gonna do a, I don't know, a hundred point inspection. It seems like that's pretty much it. There's some material that is for free, like is it, for example, under the services covered of the agreement. It does say inspect and replace as needed belts, but they're not gonna.
What cost?
Yeah, no major item.
Cost?
Well, I don't.
See, I, I wanna know, are we gonna get charged, you know, a hundred percent of the belt, belt price? Or are we gonna get a discount?
Uh, that part I don't personally know, but I tell you in general, from what it seemed like.
But make this contract to do that day.
Okay, we got Mike Blackburn here with his hand up. I think he may have an answer. Let's ask.
Chair, I've dealt with these for many, many, many years as part of a living. And, and, and things are spelled out in a maintenance agreement, and I've had issues with all the maintenance agreements in the last four or five years.
Let's see what he's got to say. Uh, Mr. Blackburn, do you have something to, that could help us on this?
Um, yes, and, and the packet, because I had put the packet together. In, in the packet, there is a sheet called certs, services covered, and it lists everything. It lists spring, spring, summer, fall, and winter, and everything that they will do within those time in those, um, sections, and those are what's covered in the agreement. Any repairs, um, are paid at the hourly rate that they put in there, and items like belts. And items like belts, I always have extra belts on, on hand, either if my guys put them on, or if they put them on, um, the belt won't cost anymore because I always ha- have those. But the services are, are covered. It is sp- spelled out on that page.
I, I, I see that, but it doesn't tell me at what cost. Okay?
The next.
And they're telling me that, you know, if, if you need refrigerant, uh, what are we paying for refrigerant? Okay?
Re, re, ref, refrigerant.
There's nothing here on the paper that I have.
Okay, okay, please let him answer. Point of order, let, let Mr. Blackburn answer.
Refrigerant is at a variable cost. All of our new units we have installed have R, R, R four ten, a refrigerant. All of our old units have R twenty-two A, which they stopped making. That, that refrigerant varies. Sometimes it's expense, some, sometimes it can, one year I paid nine hundred dollars for a can, the following year I paid five hundred dollars for a can. It's a, it's a ver- ver- variable cost. It's, it's hard to put that number in the, uh, into a quote because it fluctuates so much.
I, I don't see that specified here. I read through this. There's nothing about pricing in here. Nothing. Zero. And I want this to be gone through before we, we approve it.
We have, well, we have the, the, um, the spring, summer, fall, and winter, had those broke down, and those were broke, and each one.
I have zero dollars written down on this. Zero.
Well, then, I turned everything in. They put zero in there. The, um, I, the.
I can't approve something if I don't have a dollar value.
I think what he's saying is he handed it in, but it didn't make it to us. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Blackburn?
How can we approve it?
Okay, wait a minute. Mr. Blackburn, is that what you're saying?
I thought I had the, I thought it's been, it's been a while. I had a tough last week, as some, some of you know. Um, so, um, I believe it was turned in with this packet. Um, I haven't been at work for, for over a week. Um, so I'm just scrolling through really quick, but it was all turned in. As far as, um, the pricing goes, um, I can't find it right now, so, um, but it was, it can be, um, I got it on my desk. I'm coming back to work tomorrow. Um, it will be, um, it can be given to everybody shh, really quick, because I just can't find it right now. I just haven't been at work for over a week, so. Um.
Okay, um, I am due here, Abdul Hawk.
Hello.
Who are you next?
Okay, good. You can hear me. I'm trying to play my video. It's not working back and forth. Anyway, uh, I agree with, uh, Councilman, uh, Muscat, and I think, uh, we should under a circumstanced, circumstances, send it back to Mr. Blackburn if he can correct those things and bring it back next city council meeting, unless it is emergency and need to be approved tonight.
Blackburn, is this time sensitive that it could not wait until our next council meeting?
Um, and no, we haven't, we haven't had a, a contract for a while, and it stated that, um, the contract will start January fourth, first, or wh- whenever it's approved. So, um, the things are, uh, might be missing. I'll have to look and s- and see, and see what is, and we can resubmit it. That's not a problem.
Council Chair, if you don't mind, please.
Hi, Councilman Muscat.
Can we have, uh, our engineer look over this and see if it's, uh, if things are going to be, uh, you know, proper, um? You know, I, I just feel that maintenance agreements ought to be given us, you know, you're paying thirty-some, thirty-two thousand dollars for something, and, you know, some of this maintenance stuff doesn't come out to thirty thousand dollars.
Councilman, it looks like DPW Director Conrad is the one that submitted it to us, so he's probably already reviewed it.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at this and, and it's things that I know, and, and, and I just don't feel comfortable with this, and I have no dollar values on it.
Well, I think we've agreed to table it today and bring it back at the next meeting with all the numbers that we're looking for.
That would be good.
And Clerk, how would we handle this?
Well, you have a motion on the table, so you can either vote on it, or you can amend it to table it.
Hello.
Or, or refer it back to, uh, the administration, uh, building and maintenance.
David can.
Hold on a minute. Corporate Council Miyaki wants to say something.
Uh, yes, she could, uh, just bring a motion to either table or refer it back to the administration. That takes precedence to the main motion, and you would vote on it right now.
Let's do that so we can move on. Who made the motion?
I did.
Councilman Abdullah. Councilman Abdullah will redo the motion. Go ahead, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend my motion to take this back to administration and table it at this point. Thank you.
Support.
Or by Councilman Coniston, any discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, on the report from city officials, we have City Clerk Senya, Annual Publication Amended Notice of Meetings.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City, uh, Council authorize the publication of the annual publication amended notice of meetings as required under Public Act number two six seven, Public Acts of nineteen seventy-six, as outlined in nine A.
Support.
Support.
For the Councilman Conston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez, Budget Amendment, IT Budget.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the controller to create an IT Services GL, General Ledger Expense Account and Budget for sixty thousand dollars and decrease the IT Capital Outlay Account one oh one dash two five eight dash nine eight one period zero 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 by sixty thousand dollars. New IT Service Account will help track the Microsoft three hundred and sixty-five licenses and other software licenses that will be purchased as outlined in item nine B.
Support.
For the Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez, Purchase and Payment of Adobe Acrobat Subscription.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of Adobe Acrobat Subscription License for one year in the amount not to exceed four thousand one hundred and eighty-three dollars. In addition, authorize the mayor and controller to sign the necessary warrants and a treasurer to issue payment as outlined in nine C.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discuss- discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Comptroller Jawad, Budget Amendment for the DPW Highway Budget and Water and Sewer Budget.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorize the controller to amend the DPW Highway and Water and Sewer, uh, budget as follows. Increase the Underground Storage Tank Liability Insurance GL Account one oh one dash four four zero dash nine one one period zero two zero by one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents and decrease insurance GL Account one oh one dash four four zero dash nine one one period zero 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 by one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents. In addition, increase the Underground Storage Tank Liability Insurance GL Account five nine two dash five three six dash nine one one period zero two zero by one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents and decrease insurance GL Account five nine two dash five three six dash nine one one period zero 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 by one thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars and zero cents. This amendment is for insurance for the fuel storage tank that is split between the DPW Highway Budget and the Water and Sewer Budget as outlined in item nine D.
Port.
Supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Corporation Council Miyaki, Agreement with Priority Waste LLC for Waste Collection and Disposal and Recycling Collection Pursuant to RFP Package.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the contract between the City of Dearborn Heights and Priority Waste LLC for resent- residential solid waste, auto side collection and disposal, yard waste, curb side collection and disposal, and auto side recycling collection. In addition, Mayor Bazey and City Clerk Sienna are authorized to execute this contract on behalf of the city. Further, Mayor Bazey and Corporation Council Miyaki are authorized to direct to take whatever steps are necessary to terminate the existing agreement with the city's current contractor, GFL Environmental USA Incorporated, with, with March nineteenth, twenty twenty-two being the final day of existing agreement to be in effect as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Supported by who here? I'm sorry, Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I just hope this one works a whole lot better than the last one.
Madam Chair.
Any further discussion before we vote on it?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just have a question to Mr. Miyaki.
Sure, Councilman Abdul Hawk, let me unmute Mr. Miyaki.
Uh, Mr. Miyaki, did you add, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance. I was on trip to Lebanon and I just came last night. I didn't have a chance to read the contract. Uh, did you add everything we asked for in this contract?
Uh, I included everything that was in the RFP package, um, if that's what you mean.
Did we add the bond of five hundred thousand dollars for the?
I believe the bond was an existing item in the contract, actually.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miyaki.
You're welcome.
Council Chair.
Yes, go ahead, please. Councilman Abdullah, go ahead.
I, I'll, I'll go ahead, but I think it was somebody else. I, I do also need to speak, but I think.
Yeah, you had your hand up. Go ahead.
That's fine. Uh, just wanted to get, yeah, I spoke with, um, uh, our attorney Gary Miyaki, and I wanted to commend him on, uh, contract he put together. One of the highlights, uh, he had mentioned that there's gonna be better penalties, well, better penalties for us, or I'm sorry, against the hauler in the event there's problems. And he also mentioned that, um, he made it much, much easier for us to be able to fix our own, if there's a problem on the garbage company's end, we'll be able to fix that problem and, and get compensated back. So I just wanted to commend him for a job well done on the contract he put together. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote on it? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Wenzel, I am sorry, I'm not doing that purpose, sorry.
That's right.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, thank you. Um, being a lifelong union member, uh, I can't vote yes on this contract, this co- a non-union company with a clear conscience. I wish we would have saw it, some union companies, I know, uh, we're in a tight bind, but, um, I'm gonna vote no on this strictly because it's a non-union company and, uh, I, I, I back organized labor. Thank you.
I also feel the same way. As a union employee and retiree, we should have found a union company. Um, any further, oh, Council, Corporate Councilman Miyaki, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, I just wanted to point out that the bond language, uh, the performance bond language that, uh, Councilman Abdul Hawk asked about is under, uh, item G seven, which is at page, uh, sixteen. And I'd like to also thank, uh, Councilman Abdullah for the compliment. I appreciate it.
Any further discussion before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
I, I, I'd just like to mention, just to remind, you know, uh, everyone that during the study session on this, um, yes, I was, as a lot of us were concerned that this company was not unionized. I, I totally get that and, and understand that, of course. And we all support the unions. But at the same time, I just want to make sure, reiterate what that particular company did say at that time is the way, the reason they don't have unions, according to them, is that their, uh, employees are better paid than almost anyone out there and better treated than anyone out there. And I got the vibe and the feeling that it's a more of a family oriented business and they pay their employees well and they treat their employees well, and their employees, according to them, did not see the need to be unionized. So I just, I just wanted to throw that out there. This is not my statement or my opinion. I'm just reminding people that that's what was said at the study session by this particular company. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No. We need to do a roll call. Councilman Wenzel.
No.
Councilman Conston.
Yes.
Councilman Abdul Ha.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman, Councilman Melanowski Maxwell, no. Uh, yes, it passes. Next item on the agenda is nine F. This is Corporation Council Miyaki, Communication from Dearborn Heights Local Officers Compensation Commission.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Just to open dialogue here, I move that the Dear- City of Dearborn Heights Council concur with the notice of determination that increases the salaries of the city's elected officials as recommended by the Dearborn Heights Local Officers Compensation Commission as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Supporting by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdul Ha.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I did receive probably like every one of you, uh, email from some employees, and I read them this morning. And it is bothering me very, very much what I see, the inequality in our city between the employees. Four years ago, the mayor, uh, my friend, uh, Mayor Bazey came to my office with his wife and he wanted to run for mayor, and we had long discussion for almost hour and a half. And I loved everything he said he's going to do in the city and the changes he wanted to do, but I did advise him to run for city council first. I am not against giving compensation and increasing the salaries of the elected officials, the heads of department, and everyone he wants to give increase to, through the Compensation Commission. Years ago, when everybody took ten percent decrease in their salaries, I want everybody to know, Mr. Walter Persovich, our former clerk, he stood at the podium and he mentioned one department did not give up ten percent. They gave only six percent, and I'm not going to mention that department. It is disheartening to see that the previous administration too, and I don't want to use any bad names, that the mayor's assistant walked to a meeting with the union and dragged it for two years, almost negotiating their contract, and told them, this is what you're going to get, one percent, take it or leave it. And she stormed out of the room. And those people, those our employees who live in the city and who pay taxes in the city and who care for the city, waited several years to get the one percent. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to tell you, my dear friend, this is on you. It is in your hand, hundred percent to negotiate the contracts if nobody else. And the city council has the role to approve it or disapprove it, but the final word, it's on you. And I hope you ran for mayor as the mayor of the people, the mayor of the people, my dear friend. And I hope this is the time for you to come through and to apply that slogan and to take care of those employees because they really deserve more than what they have been getting. They always got the short end of the stick for years and years. And it is time for you to correct that. As much as you give everybody else, those people who are working less than what McDonald is paying in Target and other places, they do deserve to be treated with equality, with justice. And I ask you to please start the negotiation and be serious about it and be fair about it. That's what you run, you know, and the slogan you run under it. And those people are your people, those people are your residents, your taxpayers, and they need really to be treated equally. And I will be watching from outside what's going on, and I hope you take my words to heart and you do the right thing for our employees. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I just want to point out a couple of things because I don't want somebody, anybody to get the wrong impression on this. Um, these particular, uh, compensations were done by an independent body, an independent commission, which is the Dearborn Heights Local Officers Compensation Commission. So this is not something that the mayor brought forward and said, this is what we should get paid, or that's what he should get paid, or the clerk, treasurer, council members, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's the first thing. Second thing is that particular commission studies all the salaries and the compensation of different officials through multiple cities throughout the communities around us, surrounding us. And, and I've sat in on those commissions just, just to, uh, observe. And then they come up with these fees and there had not been any increases in a while. With that being said, I personally recommend, because I, I have seen the emails from the different union members and I sympathize with them and, and, and believe that before any of us, myself included, uh, get raises, uh, those particular families, those particular employees should be addressed first before we address ourselves. But I want to make it clear again, the people that are in line to get these raises are not the ones that brought this forward. As a matter of fact, none of us knew any of these numbers, at least I didn't know any of these numbers until they came forward on the agenda. So this is not, and I want to make it clear to the public, these elected officials bringing these forward or suggesting these particular salaries, all of us included. What I think we should do, Council Chair and Council Members, at this particular point, is table this until such time that those contracts are negotiated with all employees and they are compensated fairly. With one of the emails that we received, um, and I'm not gonna name the name, um, but I, I received it, uh, it, it was sent multiple emails and, and, and some calls to me that a lot of these union members have had a total raises since two thousand nine of four hundred and five hundred, or five hundred dollars, I think five hundred dollars total. That, to me, is unacceptable. Now, I want to make that clear. That's no reflection on this administration. Maybe things should have been negotiated much better with them in previous administrations. But until they get their fair share and fair pay and fair, fair compensation, I'm okay withholding off for all of us. And I think it's a right thing to do until they have a, um, obviously an acceptable contract, otherwise they wouldn't accept it. But, but we gotta negotiate with them much more aggressively. And no, this is not something that the mayor brought forward or the council members, for that matter. So I, I, I would strongly suggest that we change our motion to table this until such time that there's a contract in place, a fair and equitable contract in place for the union members. Thank you.
Muscat, next.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Um, you know, in previous years, we've had one other, uh, commission that that did this. And I, I brought up a point about, um, only voting for certain, uh, departments to get these raises. And I was told we either vote yes on all of them or no on all of them, which I think is not right. I think we can say we could give it to one and not the rest. Uh, I personally don't think city council needs a raise, personally. Um, and, uh, but the problem that this city has had for many, many, many years is the lack of pay for mayor. Uh, we had a mayor that worked at a large corporation. Uh, he collected a hefty retirement from there. He was getting compensated through the City of Dearborn Heights, plus collecting a retirement check from the City of Dearborn Heights. So a pay to him was really not a whole lot, but when you try to find good, uh, young, uh, energetic people to run a city, it's hard to do it on eighty thousand dollars a year, or eighty-five thousand, whatever it is. And, uh, but I do agree that we need to, we, we, we need to be more favorable with the other people that work in the city. And, um, it, it's hard to, to vote raises in when there's other people that haven't gotten raises. But on the other hand, I'd like to see the city go back to five-day work week also. And, uh, that would be more money in people's pockets too. But, uh, that's my say for the, for the time being.
Councilman Conston, next.
Briefly, Madam Chair, thank you. Number one, I, I just saw Don Killian, the chairman, and he said he'd like to have two minutes. He was at the Juana's Dinner I was at. Number two, I agree with Councilman Abdullah. This is a very important issue, and also everybody has to realize this is what the Compensation Commission came up with. And number three, uh, as I'm sure our city attorney Gary Miyaki is going to say, the, the council either receives notes and files the. the, the council either receives notes and files the report uh, or somebody specifically moves to reject it and then it's voted down. And I think that, uh, it's, it's an important uh, issue and, uh, it deserves, we all deserve some time to uh, talk about it, discuss it and hear from the members of the compensation commission. Thank you.
Okay, I will get to you, Mr. Miyaki, don't worry. I'm letting all the council members speak first and then I'll come back around to you in case there's any questions you want to answer across the board, just to let you know. Okay, next I have Councilman Abdullah.
But thank you, Council Chair, I just wanted to add one more thing that I forgot to add. Um, we, we do have to keep in mind, first of all, I'm a believer in paying people, people better pay. The better pay you pay people, the better skilled people you get. And I know I'm not referencing for myself, what I'm referencing is if you want on a regular basis, now we're not talking about the current administration, I'm talking about across the board for next one hundred years. If you want better treasurers, better clerks, better council members, better mayors, et cetera, et cetera. You gotta be able to compensate them so that it's not an option for those particular people to go for a corporate job somewhere else. So the reason you get better people is because you pay people better. I'm always a believer in that. I'm just saying it's just not the right time at this particular point. That's all I wanted to point out, that not yet. Once we work out something with the unions, then we'll go ahead and go to this, thank you.
Next I have Councilman Ado Ha.
Yes, uh, just for the record, Mayor Bazey lost over thirty-five thousand dollars a year by taking this job. And I am sure he's going to do the right thing. Because as I believe in family, I believe that the father of the family, the leader of a group has to take care, or the soldier he is, has to take care of his soldiers before he think of himself. And I hope he's listening to me and he's going to do this, the right thing. And I hope he will withdraw, or Mr. Mayak, he will withdraw this until the contract with the union is discussed and fair treatment is given to them. Then I have no problem, even now I don't have a problem approving this. But we have to be fair to our employees. And we have to do it as soon as possible. Then bring this in and the new council, I am sure will approve. Thank you.
Hey, at this point, I'd like to speak. Um, I do know our union contract expired on June thirtieth and they're not making any progress. According to them, administration has asked the union to take some pay cuts for their union employees because they had no financial information to negotiate at this time. So if they don't have financial information to negotiate at this time for the union employees, I don't feel comfortable giving a raise. I do believe it should happen, but we need to be comfortable with where we're at. Our audit has not been completed on time like it was supposed to be. So we have no idea where we as a city stand financially. Um, COVID has affected us in a lot of ways and we, I would like to wait for the audit to be completed to see how it has affected us. And also I did some checking about this commission. They are appointed by the mayor. The people on this commission are appointed by the mayor. So just, you know, so everybody knows where that comes from. And I also know too for a fact, I was contacted by a very reputable person at Ford Motor Company that he said that Bill Ba, Mayor Bazey is still on their payroll and receiving checks. And has been this whole time he was sitting in his interim mayor.
Point, point of order, I'm sorry, you know, what?
That's not even.
What somebody's, what's?
No, 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 I understand, but.
But what somebody's being paid is none of our business. I don't care if he's making a zillion dollars, I honestly truly don't care. Good luck, more power to him, but it shouldn't be our business to say, oh, well, we're not going to pay more because he's got another pay, that's, that's his deal.
No, 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 I mean, but that's what Councilman Muskett said about Mayor Palaco.
I know, but, but no, no, but okay, if we're compensating somebody, that's a whole different conversation. And I think what Councilman, I believe what Councilman Muskett was referencing is the fact that there was a pension being paid and he was still being paid a salary. That's a whole different conversation than somebody, like right now, let me give you an example. One of the people that are due for possible raises is us as council members, okay? So then let's reference me, okay, I make a good living doing what I do. So, uh, you know, nobody can say to me like, well, Councilman Muskett can't say, oh, wait a minute, Dave Abdallah makes a lot of money selling real estate. Yeah, I do make a lot of money selling real estate, but that's a whole different compensation for what I do. So if a mayor worked something like that out with, with whatever way he did, that's on him, that's none of our business, that's totally separate. Second thing, and I'm sorry, I, 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 I hope that's not what you're implying because I want to point it out as a point of order. If it's implying that just because somebody appoints somebody, they automatically are going to vote their way. I don't believe that to be the case because they're an independent commission. And I do know that I've sat in on those commissions a couple of times, not recently, but a couple of times, just as, as the audience. And the mayor is not there and there is no mayor there. So they vote completely independently. Now, we are the checks and balances to that particular commission to either vote it yes or vote it no. So I, I don't want the amplification like, you know, like, you know, and I'm just going to be blunt here. You know, like somebody picked up the phone, said, hey, raise my pay, okay, thank you, we'll see you later.
No, 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 okay. Let me, let me defend myself here. That was just put out there because it seemed like nobody knew how this commission came about. So for full disclosure, that was to let them know how the people came onto that commission. Nothing else was meant by that, but.
But that, but that's council, council chair, but that's as all commissions, it's all, wait one second, one second, no, one second. That's, that's all commissions are done, A. And B, I don't know how many people are in that commission, but just from my recollection, I think it's like seven people or eight people or whatever. So there is checks and balances there where obviously they debate amongst each other when they're looking at the Wayne County numbers and Oakland County, which are provided by our clerks, as far as what different pay is for different positions. They debate amongst each other, they come up with the idea that based on the fact of inflation, there's not been any raises, et cetera, et cetera, and to be able to attract better people. Like, let me give you an example, Ford Motor Company pays people probably better than Joe's auto manufacturers, okay? Why is that? Because they get much better, highly skilled people. So I do believe in paying people better, but that's an independent body that negotiates or argues or debates amongst themselves. And then come to us as a body to make that decision and then we debate like we are doing right now amongst ourselves. So it is an objective, as objective as it can be, just, just to put it out there, thank you.
Okay, I have Councilman Muskett next.
Yeah, I just want to say that as a retiree of Ford Motor Company, I get paid for the time that I was there. Now, if Mr., and I know, uh, Mayor Bazey retired from Ford. I don't know how many years he served. And if he was vested, he is going to get some small compensation. Not nearly of what somebody with thirty years get, but you get a compensation. And anyone in a company that has the audacity to tell someone that they're getting paid needs to be fired. And if I had that person's name and I still have the Ford Motor Company hotline phone number, I would turn that person in and ask them to be terminated. That's wrong to even suggest that.
Ado Ha.
Madam Chair. I don't want to take shots at anybody, really, this is my last meeting and your last meeting. And I hope we, we stay the way we were all, all this time together. What this has to do if he's getting paid from anybody was what we are discussing right now, nothing. It has nothing whatsoever. And, you know, like I said, I don't want to take shots at anyone who gets paid from where. Did he appoint all seven? How many he appointed if we going to say he appointed those people to give him uh, increase? Plus, the increase is not just for him, it's for everyone else. What we are here discussing, is this the proper time to do this? Or we need to take care of other people in the city? I think we have more important issue to discuss that people for several years, they've been screwed by the previous administration. And it is time for us and it is on us to make this just and right for everybody. I hope we stay within the limit of politeness and professionalism among ourselves. And I hope we do not throw things at each other. Thank you.
Right, the only reason I, I was not going to say anything, but when everybody started talking about Mayor Palaco, everybody deserves a right to get both, like Mayor Palaco did, to both collect there and here, if that's possible.
Mayor Palaco screwed every employee in the city except the fire and the police. He gave him the key to the treasury of the city. And if the city is in a bad financial situation, it's because of the drop program and all the benefit he gave to the police and fire. And those are the ones we need to talk about and those are the ones we need to audit. And those are the ones who are not leaving any money for the residents to be served properly. This is the duty and the job of our city council, in the future city council. And I hope the mayor has the guts enough to correct what Mayor Palaco did previously. Thank you.
Okay, Corporate Counsel Miaki, you're next.
Thank you. I think one of the things that the, uh, council should consider is having Mr. Killian uh, speak as the chair of the commission. He can lay out some of the reasoning of the commission. I can raise or lay out some of the issues that they raised. Uh, by making these points, I'm not taking any sort of position one way or the other with respect to this. But first of all, I want to clarify something. There has to end up being a two-thirds majority vote. That means five people, if you were going to have a vote today, to reject the determination by the commission in order for it to be rejected. Any other action, tabling it, doing whatever else. If nothing is done within thirty days of December the first of two thousand twenty-one, the raises automatically are adopted under state law and under the city code. All right, so.
The, December first, I think you mean January, December?
No, within thirty days.
Oh, within thirty days, thank you, thank you.
Mister Mayak.
Yes, Councilman.
Do we have an option to put this aside or withdraw it and bring it back after the negotiation with the union?
Well, yes, you have that.
To delay it, let's say, four or five months until the union contract is settled. We bring it back. Do we have that option?
You, you, you have that option, but it's not meaningful. Okay, in other words, if you don't take any action within thirty days of the time that it, the determination was filed and it was filed on December.
I understand that, I'm just asking.
It automatically.
The mayor or you withdraw this motion, this item from the agenda. Can you bring it back after the negotiation with the union is done? This is my question, yes or no?
No, I mean, if you want to have any impact on it.
We don't have any option but to reject it by five to two? Or we don't do anything, thirty days, it's done?
That is, that effectively is a practical matter, yes. In other words, though, what I was telling you is, yeah, you can do what you were talking about doing, but it means nothing if the idea is to see if you might want to reject it or might want to adopt it. For example, even the motion to concur is unnecessary in this situation.
I do not want to reject it, I'm asking for a agreeable solution to all of us. Can we withdraw it tonight and bring it back after the negotiation is done?
No.
I don't want to be cornered, that's what I'm telling you.
No, because the, the law says it shall be effective thirty days after its filing with the city clerk. It was filed with the.
I moved.
Filed with the city clerk.
Madam Chair.
On December the first.
Councilman Epp.
I moved to reject this proposal.
Okay, next I have Councilman Muskett.
Wait, wait, I'm not.
Oh, okay, sorry.
If, if, if I may.
Um, do we have to, is this all a vote for everyone or can we just choose who we want to vote for, for like, say, I just want to do the, the, the three main elected officials in that city council? And I believe there's something that I read and correct me if I'm wrong, first year people don't get the raise.
No, the city ordinance says that the determination, it speaks collectively, must be rejected. Now, state law may not be consistent with that. But the question becomes what our city ordinance ends up saying and whether or not you're going to cause potential legal problems. I could revisit this issue and end up coming back to you with options with regard to our code and to make sure that it is consistent with the state law. But the way our ordinance is drafted and it was drafted long ago says the determination, it speaks collectively in terms of the determination of all the salaries.
Because when I read the state law, i- it allowed us to not vote, we can just vote for one if we wanted to. And I, it, it is, does not state law override our, our charter?
Yes, ordinarily, state law would supersede our, actually it's our city code.
Under that argument, then we should be able to go past the thirty days so we can research that. Because it's not giving us the, an option of doing what's the right thing.
But the, the, the state law says you have the thirty days as well. The state.
Well, I understand that, but if.
Right.
But if, but if our ordinance is, is not according to state law, okay? And, and, and I believe it says something in there about first year term people too. So that's something that needs to be looked at.
Well, if you wanted to end up having a meeting again, within thirty days of December the first, another meeting. You could table this matter and refer it over to me to research that particular issue if you felt that it's necessary.
Okay, let me ask, wait, wait, point of order here. We do have a meeting on December twenty-eighth this year still. So that is still within the thirty days. I don't think anybody's getting that point, we have a meeting on the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month.
That's correct, we do have one on the twenty-eighth.
So we still would be within the thirty days.
So could we have, could you authorize the, the, the city attorney to look into that?
Corporate counsel, can you please look into that?
Yes, I'll, I will do so and before the next meeting.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
Thank you, I mean, everybody spoke a few times, I just want to. Don't we have the authority, the power, the authority to amend the, the budget at any time during the year? Including salaries?
Yes.
So what's the big deal, we could do that anytime now and we could vote this down and then.
Not elected official salaries.
No.
No, not elected officials?
Yes, council, councilman, the, uh, state law basically provides for the local officers' compensation commission. The local officers' compensation commission therefore sets if the, if the city adopts an ordinance consistent with the local officers' compensation commission, then the local officers' compensation commission, uh, ends up having the authority to set the salaries and no one else does.
Okay, well, I, I, I think we should maybe look into this at our next meeting, but I, I, I just a couple of things I wanted to say is, uh, for the residents of Dearborn Heights, and this is just some facts. Uh, a city council person, um, makes, uh, I think right now, a little over ten thousand dollars a year. And if you, if you divide that by the hours that we normally do by, uh, attending meetings and going to people's houses, looking at their trees and all the different things we, we, we do, we make less than five dollars an hour. Um, just throw that out there. Um, when I, when I was first elected in two thousand seventeen, uh, this issue came up about city employees giving up twenty percent of their pay. And ever since then, I've heard they got it back, they didn't get it back. And, um, this is going to be one of my major, being reelected, one of my major, uh, projects is going to make sure these contracts, these union contracts with our, our, our city employees are taken care of really ASAP. I mean, and I'm going to keep a fire underneath the mayor's behind to make sure this, this gets done. And, you know, one of the things we should always look into is, you know, the five day work week. I mean, that, that's a, that's a luxury that our employees have. And our police and fire, they work seven days a week. And, uh, I, I think we, we miss out on some of our services by working, uh, just four days a week. But yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm favorable, looking into that, the December twenty-eighth meeting, see what we can accomplish by then. But yeah, I'm, I, I'm, I'm favorable, looking into that, the December twenty-eighth meeting, see what we can accomplish by then.
Support.
Thank you.
Councilman Abdullah, did you have any further comment?
Yes, I did. I had a question for, um, our counselor Gary Miaki. Um, Gary got a question for you. So if we were to table this, and then the contracts are renegotiated to the point of being acceptable to the unions. And let's just use a hypothetical, that's February first, you know, everything is accepted and everybody's happy. Could the compensation commission not meet again, and then we vote on it within thirty days of that?
No. It's based on after the compensation commission ends up having its meetings, making its determination, and that determination is to be filed with the city clerk. And then it's very clear, within thirty days, the council has to reject it by a two-thirds vote. Otherwise, the determination stands and the salaries go into effect.
Then I got another follow-up question. Are we able to make these salaries, let's use a hypothetical salary of ten thousand dollars right now, for the treasurer or the clerk? So let's say it's ten thousand dollars. Can we say that that salary goes into effect on Ju-, we pick a date that we know we're gonna be able to have negotiated the union contracts on June the first? And then if it's not negotiated by that point, cancel it just prior to that time?
No, again, the determination of the salary is made by the local officers' compensation commission. And you wouldn't be able to take actions along those lines that would make a contingent or an other, and, and any other way, do anything other than either reject it or not reject it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Abdullah Hawk.
Madam Chair, question for Mister Miaki. If we reject it today, when is the next time the pension commission meets again to decide if they're going to bring it back to us?
You mean the local officers' compensation commission?
I think it's for.
How long, they, every month, every year?
Every two years.
So we will not have a chance to visit this issue for the next two years?
That is correct.
And that is the state law?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
In on here, but I have, Steve Henry has his hand up. I don't know if he can add anything to this.
Oh, good evening, thanks again. Uh, as a member of the commission, I understand the, um, the difficulty here, whereas we would want to grant a raise to some, some elected officials and some not to others. But that, that isn't within our, within our commission. Um, it's kind of an all or nothing thing. And the only thing that we looked at was the comparable wage and compensations to like communities in over fourteen different cities. And we came to the conclusion that we, as Dearborn Heights, rank in the lower fourth out of twenty communities. We have not, we have not allowed or approved any compensation since two thousand and eight, I believe. And that, just a long, long, long time to go to ask people to serve without being compensated. I get it, that some of the city council members may or may not need the money. But some of the other elected officials should be compensated. And I think that there's a huge distinction between the union contract and elected officials. That we can't, it's like apples and oranges. I'm a union, I've been union for thirty-five years, forty years. And I don't think that you can categorically say, if the union doesn't get what they want, then the, the elected officials will not get what they want. But if I can answer the question, you know, we, we, our charge is that it's either all or nothing at this point. I don't know how to get around it. Um, but I would suggest that if we wanted to keep our great qualified elected officials, that we do something to compensate them more in, in the realm of, um, between two thousand and eight and now. Has nothing to do with previous administrations. It's what we're doing now. So thank you for your time.
Council, Council Chair?
Go ahead, Councilman, I'm sorry, Corporate Counsel Miaki.
Yes, I would note that, uh, Mister I Dabasha, that's Doctor Dabasha, is also a member of the commission and.
Right, I was gonna call him next.
Is, is.
I have him on the list also, but if the council members raise their hand, I'm taking them ahead.
Okay.
Of them. Um, I have Councilman Abdullah next.
Um, see, okay, I want to put this thing on hold, I want to table it. And I want to make sure that union members are compensated fairly. But, and, 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 and I, I would hope you could look into even further, uh, our corporate counselor, Gary Miaki. But if we're gonna put this thing on hold for two years for some of the elected officials, so let's just throw, you know, like the clerk, the um, um, treasurer, the mayor, uh, some of the council members, et cetera. Um, and put that on hold for two years, so let's just say hypothetically, the contracts negotiated and approved with the union members January twentieth. Now you're penalizing some of the elected officials for two years, A. But B, you're penalizing some elected officials that probably have nothing to do with this. So let's take a look at some, and I'm not, this is not a particular name, this is just a position. Clerk. What does the clerk have to do with what's negotiated between union members and, and the administration, specifically the mayor's administration? What does the treasurer have to do with that? They don't. So is it fair to have them hold off then for two years? See, I'm okay with holding off, as long as it's changed upon the fact that the contract's renegotiated with the union members in a favorable and a happy way for them. But if we're gonna hold off on those elected officials I just mentioned for two years, and then yet this union contract can be negotiated favorably by January tenth, twentieth, or March or April or May, that's not fair either, honestly, to the treasurer, to the clerk, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
We're going on and on. I'm gonna ask that we try and limit it so we can move forward, because we're spending way too much time on something. Um, I have Councilman Abdullah Hawk, go ahead, please. Did you have anything further to add? Councilman Abdullah Hawk?
He might be having trouble with his speaker.
You know, I pass, I.
Councilman, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I'm not, again, I'm not against giving raises to everybody. The heads of department, the deputies, we can give them raises anytime we want by.
No, we can't.
The heads of department are not elected employees, they are appointed. They do not fall really under the compensation uh, commission. If I am wrong, please tell me I'm wrong.
You're not.
The city council has the power to give increases to all these people at any time. We talking about the city council and the mayor, the treasurer and the clerk. I'm just asking again. Please, if you can, look into it and see if we have any way we can agree on. Let's move to the twenty-eighth of December, bring it back, and we have more information at that time.
Oh, I think it's, that's a good idea, because we're taking way too long on something that I'm not even sure which way it's going with everybody. You know, some wanna bring it back, some wanna table it. Does everybody agree to bring it back at the next meeting?
Yeah, we have the option to take it to the twenty-eighth.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
Council Chair, that's, that, that's what I was going to say. You know, we have a motion on the floor, we can either vote on the motion or amend the motion to bring it back on the twenty-eighth, and have our corporation council do its due diligence.
I want to think. Okay, I want to think the other.
I, I, uh, uh, I, I made the motion, and I'd like to amend the motion to refer this back to our corporation and council, and to be voted on on our next meeting on December twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-one.
Corporate Counsel Miaki?
Just a suggestion that you don't refer it back to me, I, there's not, I'm not the commission. But rather to table the matter to the meeting of December the twenty.
Okay, Council Chair, I make a motion that the, the city of Dearborn Heights, uh, city council table this motion. Uh, or this, this, uh, communication from the Dearborn Heights local offers compensation commission to the next meeting on the twenty-eighth of November twenty twenty-one.
Support. It's, uh, twenty-eighth of December, Councilman.
Twenty-eighth of December twenty twenty-one.
Support.
Corporate Counselman Abdullah, before, uh, we vote, I wanna thank the other commission members that raised their hands. If you wanna come back to the next meeting, you know, you're more than welcome, but this time we're gonna take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Next, uh, next on the agenda is DPW Director Conrad, Approval of Intergovernmental Agreement, also known as IGA, between Wayne County and the city of Dearborn Heights for improvements on Warren Road.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the intergovernmental agreement between Wayne County and the city of Dearborn Heights for improvements on Warren Road from Outer Drive to Hayden. In addition, authorized the mayor and comptroller, comptroller to sign the warrant for this project. The estimated total amount for the project is fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And Wayne County is also asking for twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars for working capital advance. As outlined in nine G.
Corporate Counselman Abdullah Hawk, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have DPW Director Conrad, Water Department Equipment Rental.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved a three-month rental of a, I'm sorry, Vaylor twenty-one hundred dash I combination sewer cleaning truck from Jack Donnie company in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred dollars per month for a total of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred, with an option to extend it on a month-to-month basis. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant upon receipt and the treasurer to issue payment for the water and sewer repair and maintenance account five nine two dash five four zero dash nine three two dash, I'm sorry, period zero zero zero, as outlined in item nine H. Support.
Support by Councilman Conston, Councilman Muscat, did you have a question?
Yes, and I want to apologize for asking these questions. Uh, usually I call the directors, but I've been very busy with family matters the last few weeks. Um, so let me apologize to, uh, Mister Conrad. But Mister Conrad, this, uh, is due to an accident, and I didn't hear about any accident, uh, to a vehicle. Is this vehicle repairable? Um, are we gonna be able to salvage this vehicle somehow? Because that's a pretty big truck, uh, you know, uh, I've seen it, and it's a good-sized vehicle.
Okay, um, actually, no, the, uh, vendor and the insurance company, MMRMA, has already determined that the vehicle is uh, beyond repair. Um, so therefore, we are in the next agenda item, going for a purchase, a lease purchase of an, of a new vehicle. So this rental is just, just to get us through the time period until that new vehicle arrives.
What damage was done to the vehicle?
It, it, uh, actually rolled over on November eighth, uh, causing substantial damage to the vehicle. So, uh, it is, it has been determined it's unreparable.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Wensel?
Yeah, my, that, my question was, uh, I, I, I was, I'm familiar with the, the incident, but if we were going to buy a new one, and, uh, it didn't roll over, I, I believe it tipped over, uh, it just fell over on its side. Which brings me to think, is, is there anything else that's salvageable? I mean, the, the, the motor, uh, lots of parts. What are we doing with, or is an insurance company taking the vehicle, or what's happening to the vehicle?
That is correct. The insurance company will assume the, a vehicle um, as part of the agreement for the payout of the vehi-, of the insurance claim. So, the, in receipt of the insurance claim, the vehicle now becomes our possession.
Now, don't we, does it, do we have anything that'll cover this rental cost in, in insurance, or is that just coming out of the budget, the twelve thousand, uh, per month?
That, that's gonna have to come out of our insurance claim and our budget.
How much of that is, is the city liable for?
Um, well, I mean, I guess the, the, the good news is, is if you approve the next agenda item, uh, the vehicle will be available for our, for delivery to us in January. Um, we originally, we were originally slated to not receive a vehicle until February or March, because there is a, a waiting list for these vehicles. But the cities that were in front of us have not committed to the purchase, so we have been bumped up on the list, so we should save at least two months of rental. Um, if we wanted to roll the dice and not rent one, we could do that too, but I wanna have this contract in our pocket. Uh, it is, I mean, this, this rental would pay for itself if we have one sewer backup.
Okay, now, the new vehicle is, is the new vehicle gonna be comparable or better than our existing one?
It is better than the one we have, or the one that we had. And it would have needed replacing in two years. I mean, not that that's, you know, a justification for the, the, you know, the accident or the need to purchase this early, but I mean, these vehicles are getting any cheaper. Um, in fact, we're kind of fortunate that we're able to get on, you know, this last year's bid yet, because there was a considerable increase um, that, that's projected for the new, uh, source well price that would have cost us more if we go out next year for this. So, I mean, we're I wouldn't wanna say benefiting from a bad situation, but I mean, we are in a good spot to replace this right now.
Right, thank you.
Councilman Abdullah?
Uh, thank you, Council Chair. I should point out that with my conversation with our director, Robert Conrad, he did point out to me that this is something that's just a backup for what we use Pipe Tech for. So Pipe Tech's the one that does it for our residents, but this is in the event of an emergency, and something was needed within twenty-four hours is what we use this particular vehicle for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next we have DPW Director Conrad, Purchase and Payment Water Department Equipment, twenty twenty-one Sewer Cleaner.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the purchase of a two thousand twenty-one combination single-engine sewer cleaner with a positive displacement vacuum system mounted on a heavy-duty truck chassis, uh, from Jack Donnie Company. And a, and a Sourcewell National Contract Number one two two zero one seven dash F as in Frank, S as in Sam, C, contract agreement in an amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars, which includes a seven-year lease slash purchase option with an annual payment of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents. In addition, authorize the mayor and comptroller to sign the warrant upon receipt and, and the treasurer to issue payment from the water and sewer capital outlet account five nine two dash five zero zero dash nine eight one, period zero zero. capital outlet account five nine two dash five zero zero dash nine eight one, period zero 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 as outlined in item nine I. Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes, uh, two things. One is, uh, how much are we receiving for the old vehicle through our insurance company? That's one. And number two, what are we going to do? Are we going to do a seven-year lease or a purchase? Because that makes a difference because the price then, uh, goes from four fifty-one to four eighty-nine, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. So there's a thirty-some thousand dollar difference there.
So, w- we are doing a lease purchase. Um, and that's just to amortize the cost of the vehicle over the seven years. Uh, and the amount we received from the insurance company, I'm not, I don't have the exact number.
Bobby told me, I think, one, one sixty-eight, I believe you said? I, I thought it was right around that number is what you told me.
I, yeah, I.
Are we going to use that for a down payment then and to reduce that, that four hundred and fifty-one thousand by a hundred and sixty-eight thousand?
I, I guess that, that's up to, um.
It'd be up to us.
Right. So I mean, you know, basically, I'm not, I'm not totally abrusted on how these checks come in, but I'm pretty sure that any payments from insurance companies and things like that go into the general fund and the general budget, so I guess it would be up to, you know, the council and the mayor to put that money from the insurance claim back into the purchase of the new vehicle and.
Yeah, because this is coming out of the water department and, uh, that's, that's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's a lot of money for the water department. And then it reduce, a- a- and the price of it at four fifty-one, if we do seven years, the price is going to be four eighty-nine. If you take seven years times sixty-nine, nine eighty-two, thirty-four, comes out to four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, not four hundred and fifty-one thousand. So I, you know, I, I'm going to approve this, but I want, uh, the comptroller and the, uh, to look at this and make sure that these numbers are correct because they're not right on this paper. Okay, and I'll be asking a question again to get back up on this, uh, in, in two weeks because that's not, this can't happen, we got to use that hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars back into the water department as a down payment for this, for this, um, equipment, which would bring then our total cost out even more because the interest will save. So I'm going to ask the, 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 the comptroller to make sure that he has all of that stuff done in two weeks. Because I know this is a hot, hot item that we have to have.
Okay, next I have Councilman Abdullah.
Um, Director Conrad, I have two questions for you. Number one, uh, you know, it's a, it's a purchase option, so typically on leases, uh, you know, you pay a lease payment and then at the end of the lease, you have the option of purchasing it for a set amount predetermined at the initial, uh, you know, start of the contract. Do you, do you know what that dollar figure is? I'm just curious.
We, we own the machine at the end of the, the seven-year period, there is no buyout on the machine, so.
Well, because, because, because you had it as a lease.
That's just, that's just how the, how the company puts the financing together is, is like, it's a lease purchase. I mean, I guess we do have the option, I guess, at the end of this term to turn it back into them for a new purchase, but I mean, they totally uh, expect us to, you know, take full ownership of the vector when, you know, we're done paying it off after seven years. It is our machine. So this is, this is just, you know, another way of financing the purchase and, you know, I guess I, I'm, you know, to, to put clarity to the source well price, I mean, the note, the, the value of, you know, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixteen dollars is the source well price. I mean, the source well price that we get for the machine doesn't include financing, so, you know, I, to, to be clear on, you know, what we're paying for the machine, you know, the, the source well doesn't, you know, price their things out to be financed. This, this is something that we're doing because we don't have that capital expense right now to pay for the entire machine or even, you know, the machine minus the, uh, insurance claim. So this is just a way to finance the machine so we can get one as soon as possible.
Okay, and the, and the second question I had for you, uh, Director is, this is almost a half-million-dollar item that we are purchasing. Why is this not put out for RFPs? I'm just curious.
It, it was, it was put out on, that's what the source, source, so Sourcewell is a government, uh, contract that's bid once a year. And what they do is, is they go to all the vendors and have them, give them their best prices for all the equipment and then they award those values in, in those contracts for that equipment, so, I mean, it, it is, it is a very good price that, you know, the government has negotiated and then that is passed on to every municipality and it's only for municipalities, no one else can benefit from this if, uh, you know, if Pipe Tech wanted to buy this piece of equipment, they'd pay a hundred thousand dollars more for it.
I see, thank you very much.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes, thank you, um, I know when I, when I lease a vehicle on, uh, I have leased several, um, one of the benefits is, uh, the, the free maintenance on it. Are we going to, are we going to enjoy this privilege on this, on this, uh, sewer cleaner?
No, again, th- this is just a way for us to, it, it, they, they call it a lease purchase, but it's more like a finance, it's more like a seven-year finance.
Is this better than, you said, the outright purchasing? If it is, do we do this with our street cleaners? Do we purchase them same way?
Um, no, they're a little cheaper. I mean, our fire trucks, it appears that we purchase those this way. Um, you know, I mean, again, but a fire truck is just as expensive as this vector, so, I mean, you know, our street sweepers and, and our dump trucks, you know, they're a hundred thousand dollar items, you know? Um, i- i- it's a little more, it's a, it's a more tolerable amount to, you know, uh, pay in one, in one budget year.
Right, thank you. I yield my time.
Council Chair, one more, one more, one more thing. Uh, the, the hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, if that's correct, should go toward that to bring that purchase price down to two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six sixteen, which would save us a tremendous amount of money in interest. Okay, I urge, urge you desperately to do that because we're self-insured, we should be able to get that money immediately and put that as the down payment and help us finance that at a much lower rate than sixty-nine thousand dollars a year or almost seventy thousand a year.
Can we put that in the motion?
Um, I'd have to ask our, 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 our city clerk, who's our parliamentarian, if she could chime in.
I believe, but I believe you, um, can amend your motion.
Uh, who did the, the motion?
I did.
You did.
That one did.
All right, I, I'd like to amend my motion to include whatever money that was received by the insur- from the insurance company to be used as a down payment towards the equipment. Thank you. Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Pension Administrator Lewis, General Government Pension Committee Reappointments.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the Pension Administrator reappoint, reappointments of Trustee John Riley and Trustee Vince McCary to the Dearborn Heights General Government Pension Committee, terms to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three as outlined in nine J.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Hawk, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers' Approval for Auction of Vehicles.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the auction of the following vehicles that have been deemed as forfeited by DPU. Proceeds from the auction will pay for the towing and the storage fees and the remainder will go to the state. Forfeiture count is outlined in nine K and then there's a list of about twelve vehicles below.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdullah, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'd like to find out where these auctions going to be held and when it's going to be held. And what's interesting that, you know, and I'm just going through this, my mind has passed, passed a few days about this. You know, we've, we've done a lot of these before, but we've, the city council has never, ever received uh, documents of how much we, money we, we have received from such auctions. And I'd like to know how much money we do get out of because I'll tell you what, there's some vehicles in here that can get some pretty good money.
Uh, I have come, I have, um, Chief Myers unmuted, let's let him answer that.
So, there is like a, a bunch of questions in there, but I'll try to give you some of those answers, so, there's a couple of different types of auctions that we do. This auction here are vehicles that were either seized through drug forfeiture, through OWI forfeiture, they might have been in accidents where the, um, owners decided to abandon the vehicles at the tow yard, so most of them have been sitting there anywhere from three to six months or longer. So once that, we can determine that through the legal process that then we could take possession of them and title them to us, we then have a uh, and they're all sitting in the yard, our, our towing vendor, once we have your approval, we set them up for auction. So then that auction happens at Dalton's Towing in their yard, um, it's posted in the media and they put out the date and the time, so those are a- announced. Um, then once that happens, when it comes to these, um, they get to actually, uh, recoup their towing and storage fees that they never got. And then the remainder goes into our forfeiture account, so when you want to, when you say, well, we don't know how much we got from these, they show up in the ledgers um, of the budget of, of deposits into, um, the forfeiture account, so you're, I, I believe council has access to seeing the, the budget, um, so that's where those would be, um, that's this type of auction. Um, then there's other auctions we have with high-value cars or city vehicles that are no longer in service or they're, they're well past their usable life, any vehicle that we have in our possession that hasn't sat at Dalton's, we'll use a private company called Bitter G or that's what we've been using and it actually goes to an internet auction, um, and we get higher values for those cars because they're operable cars or there are other ones that are seized in forfeitures that have a higher value, so there's two types of auction we do, this is the ones that that's being down at adult line for value, condition are, they're, uh, crashes and, uh, things like that, you know, there's some buyers but mainly scrappers because of the type of vehicles, how poor condition those vehicles are in that are
Okay, thank you.
Being sold, so those are the type, yep.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman Abdul Hawk.
As, uh, the chief, how much normally we pay, uh, per day and per car uh, to the place where they are parked or, you know, what about.
Well, that's just it, we don't pay. The car owner pays when they choose not to recover their vehicle, whether it was in a crash and it was abandoned or any of those type of things. Eventually, by law, we can go through a process and take possession of those vehicles and get them auctioned. So, they're accumulating the charges from the towing facility who did the tow and who is housing that vehicle. Once we can go through the legal process of them being abandoned, basically, then we have the auction and it is, um, the towing facility has first, first for their services and fees and then the remaining, so we're not being billed anything when those cars are sitting there.
They take the money from the sale of the, of the cars, I assume.
Can you repeat that?
When we sell the cars in an auction, they take whatever fees they, they accumulate.
They take their towing and the storage fees first out of the sale.
How much they charge us or they charge the owner a day for, uh, ho- housing those vehicles.
Off the top of my head, I'm not going to be telling you, I, I want to say it somewhere, probably, I'd be guessing less than a hundred dollars a day, probably seventy, sixty-five, I'm guessing, I'd have to go back and look, it's, it's changed over the years.
Did we ever, did we ever try to find other facilities or have a contract to be bid out to have this kind of service at a reasonable price?
So, I do not know, I'm not aware of that. Um, I know that the current vendor that we use, part of the reason we're using them is it is a city business who has a onsite facility for their housing of their vehicles within our city, which is a convenience to our residents and those that have um, dealings with the tow company, I, uh, and the police department, um, but to answer your question, I do not know when that has occurred.
Is it reasonable that we go out for bid to find other facilities and to see if we can save some money? Because if a car sits for six months, if you multiply it at seventy or fifty dollars, that's fifteen hundred a, a month for six months, you're looking close to ten thousand. If a vehicle is in an accident and that vehicle doesn't make the price of ten thousand, are we responsible to pay the difference?
No.
So they just.
That, that's the, that's the thing, so say you have a complete, say you have a completely totaled vehicle that was burned out, it was just not a crash, it was burned out, whatever it was. No, it sits there because the, either the owner walks away from it or the insurance companies are covering it, whatever the reason it is.
We're not responsible to pay any difference if the car doesn't bring the amount out to the towing.
No, that, that is not, that's not the case, we're not paying for the storage, they're, they're recouping what they can. Um, once again, most of these vehicles are either inoperable or close to being inoperable, um, because it, the cars that are normally just impounded, whether say, just say it's for a, a crash between two vehicles that are undrivable.
Okay.
Whether insured, the insurance company then, um.
Are the public allowed to go to this facility and inspect those cars before the, of the auction?
Yeah, they, they they post it when it's going to be, they put placards on the cars, people come in, they walk through it, um, and then they actually have the auctions at, um, and it's at, um, in the south end off of Inkster Road and Powers is where the lot is.
I know where they are, uh, chief. Uh, and this is a closed bid or it is an action, open action, uh, people bid on the spot?
It's an open auction.
Okay. Thank you very much, chief.
Yep.
Question before we vote on this?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat, did you have something?
No, let's vote.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Council Chairwoman Resolution for Allen's Brothers PLLC. Okay, this was on the agenda a month ago, the reason it's back on here is because Councilman Abdul Hawk asked us to bring it back in thirty days.
Madam Chair, for the sake of discussion, I'm going to make the motion, you know, to discuss this.
Okay. Do I hear support?
Support.
Support by that you, Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I couldn't tell, you sound like Councilman Coniston. Okay, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
We all also agreed that we would not do anything with this until we heard from the Ethics Board. We are not sure on what really went on. I'm not an expert in, in forensics of, uh, email and, and, uh, Facebook and whatnot. And we need to let the Ethics Board take care of it, this is the proper place for that, is the Ethics Board.
Do we want to delay it another thirty days then? I mean, we can bring it back in thirty days and see.
I still think we should just go with the Ethics Board, wait till the Ethics Board gives us a, 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 uh, what they say that we can bring it up then.
I know where they're at on that.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and two things, number one, uh, there's not only the grievance that was filed with the Attorney Grievance Commission. There's not only the grievance that was filed with the Attorney Grievance Commission. But also there's a lawsuit filed in federal court by Mr. Blackwell for discrimination. Um, this is part of an involved situation, there's been some. More than some attacks on both sides, but the grievance will typically take. Months, if not more than months, the federal district court lawsuit will also take probably at least a year. So, uh, um, procedurally, if, if we pass a resolution, whether or not. The council says we should continue to have the Allen Brothers work with our Economic Development Department or not. That's really a call, number one, by the Economic Development Department, the mayor, it's something that has to be put out for bid. As Mr. Uh, City Attorney Gary Miyaki put out, so. Uh, whatever the council's pleasure is, but um, I, I agree that we should wait and see. What the response is from the Attorney Grievance Commission and. The result of the federal district court lawsuit that's been filed over this, thank you.
Doesn't matter to me, I only brought it back cuz Councilman Abdul Haq asked for it to come back.
Chair, just one more, one more.
Wait a minute, I got Councilman Abdullah next.
Okay.
I've got you on the li- you're on the list.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair, I, I just want to clarify, just like we've already kinda discussed, but I just wanna make sure we're on the same page that. It's time we mentioned that we would wait because of litigation between the two parties, because of, you know, he said, she said. Uh, we all agree that we wait for the state bar to make their decisions before we make ours. But nevertheless, there, there, there is an important statement that does need to be made and, and I totally agree on this part of the resolution. Where these two statements, I'm gonna read them because these are very important factors. Whereas the city of Dearborn Heights is responsible for selecting contracts for city services and. Holding those contractors to standards of work and quality and ethical behavior. So I'm, I'm asking all parties that work or any party that works with the city of Dearborn Heights. To make sure that they work with quality and work with ethical behavior. In addition to that, the second statement I need to make, and this was a part of the resolution, I think it's a very important statement. Whereas Dearborn Heights strives to be a community that welcomes neighbors of all races, ethnicities, religions and disability status. And the city council's actions should embrace those goals, we always embrace those goals, I embrace those goals. The only thing is, we just wanna wait for, to see what the state or the um, the bar, the Michigan State Bar of Michigan. Makes a decision before we make our decision, thank you.
The park next.
Who?
Councilman Abdul Haq.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And again, I will wait until uh the Attorney Grievance Commission give us direction. And until that time, I think we should table this uh motion.
Councilman Muskett?
Yeah, I just don't wanna penalize either party by making a decision today on this without knowing exactly what went on. I mean, that would be, you know, foolish of us to penalize Allen Brothers or Mr. Blackwell, uh, one way or the other. And, and let it play out in the courts and when, when it comes time, then we'll know, then we'll.
Sorry, Councilman, so this is a public po- point of order, Councilman, so this is a meeting. Go ahead, Council Muskett.
Uh, you know, that's what I say, just uh, you know, we, I don't wanna penalize anybody until we find out what the rulings are. I'm not a judge, I'm not uh, an attorney, so let's uh, let them do what they do best and go from there.
Wanna take a vote on that, what do you wanna do, do you wanna table this until a future date?
Yes.
Okay, somebody redo the motion, who made the motion? Here, Abdul Haq, can you please redo that motion to table it to a future?
I move to table.
Support.
I move to table item eleven A. Until we hear from the Attorney Grievance Commission and at that time, somebody will bring it back to the table.
Support.
By Councilman Muskett? Let's take a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, next we have Mayor Bazey, Michigan Department of Transportation, also known as MDOT. Annual twenty twenty-two permit package and performance resolution.
Council Chair.
Muskett.
I move that in Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Michigan Department of Transportation. Annual twenty twenty-two permit package and performance resolution for the annual maintenance, pavement restoration and special events. To be performed on MDOT roads right of way in our jurisdiction during the twenty twenty-two. In addition, authorize Robert Conrad, Public Works Director, to sign the documents on behalf of the city as outlined in eleven B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston, is there any discussion?
Yes, Council Chair.
Council Muskett.
That's as long as they don't start dumping poles everywhere and leaving them there for two and three years. Just because it's an easement, the city still belongs to us. Okay, I'm tired of seeing these poles laying around, yeah, you know, people can't even cut their lawns for crying out loud. And I know one thing, if they put one of those poles on my front lawn, I'm gonna go buy me a thousand dollar chainsaw. And I, I don't, you know, and I feel bad for these residents to have to deal with this, this is ridiculous. There's been five poles sitting on Cherry Hill for a year and a half, two years. They were putting up poles today and I asked the guy about those poles, but we don't know nothing about them. So, I, I, you know, as long as it's got nothing to do with, you know, uh, giving away our city, I'm okay with this.
Any further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is new business, this is a business license renewal for Mexican Fiesta located at two four three one zero Ford Road. And Polish League of American Veterans number sixteen located at two five two 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 Warren.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conston?
Move that the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business licenses for Mexican Fiesta at two four. Three one zero Ford Road and Polish League of American Veterans number sixteen at two five. Two 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 Warren as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdul Haq, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, Council and Whistle. Comments from the council table, you're number one.
Oh, wow, okay. Um, first of all, I'd like to uh, on behalf of myself and I'm sure my fellow uh council members. Uh, our condolences to the family of Mike Blackburn for their emotional loss in their family recently, our hearts go out to them. And um, one thing we've all had, had calls and issues with is our ordinance uh. Violations and ordinance issues and I think we need to clear this up once and for all. I think we should get it first of the year or whenever sooner. Have a study session, let's go over our ordinance department, uh, if we need to hire. More, two, two or three more full-time people, we've gotta do it, we're, we're having to have part-time people come in for six months. And then having to leave and we just recently lost a very valuable person in the ordinance department cuz the six months term was up. We need to forget about these part-time guys, get some full-time people in there and solve this problem once and for all. Um, it's become an issue and every council member knows, any, based probably any city employee knows there's. Problems with ordinance uh enforcement, it's not the people, it's the lack of people that we have. The people that are, that are in there right now are doing a fantastic job and they should be commended for that. And speaking about fantastic jobs, um, our DPW department. Uh, I can't say enough of uh what they've been doing with these tree, tree trimming. Um, we, we needed like twenty more guys and ten more trucks. They're doing a fantastic job, they're out there in a very dangerous situations, being very professional, uh, very impressed with the. The progress that they're making and uh. Um, I'd like to also add that um, this Saturday from one to three. Um, my family and I will be doing Salvation Army bell ringing at the Kroger store on Ford Road, Dearborn Heights. Come by and see us, it's uh, it's an annual, it's a yearly tradition that we do, we'd like to see you out there, donate to the Salvation Army. And I'd like to wish everyone uh, in the, in the city and everyone, everyone, the residents of Dearborn Heights. Very Merry Christmas and a happy holiday and all the things that everybody celebrates this time of year. God bless everyone and uh be careful, thank you.
Thank you, next I have Councilman Muskett.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair, uh, first and foremost, I would like to pass my deepest sympathies to Mr. Blackburn. Uh, I, I fully understand what you're going through and uh, I, I don't wish that on anyone, sir. And, and thank you for your service and I, I'd also like to thank everyone in the city. Uh, who supported me the last couple of weeks. Uh, residents, uh, city officials, uh, beautiful flowers sent by the fire department and, and the. Building Engineering Department, I, by heart, I'm very humbled, thank you. Um, you, you made it a little bit easier on me. Um, but uh, the, I guess I already said what I wanted to say about those electric poles and utility poles laying around. And I'm hoping that uh, someone in the city, DPW Emergency Manager, uh. Uh, do something about it, we gotta get rid of them, either put them up or get them out of here. And charge whoever put them there the money it costs to, to move them, that's number one. And um, the latest I have is, I went to go visit Parkland Park. Friday afternoon, the park is closed. This is a public park. That park has no business being locked during daytime hours. I was shocked and then I went back again the next day and it was locked again. That park needs to stay open, folks, and I'm gonna hold that to our uh, our recreation department or DPW or whoever's closing it. Keep that park open so I can drive my car there, get out, walk around, use the facilities. And get back in my car and drive home again, no one has the right to shut me out of a park that I own. And uh, that's about it and uh, for me today, thank you.
Thank you, I have Councilman Abdullah next.
Thank you, Council Chair, uh, first of all, I have a statement on behalf of uh, Councilman. Moby Dune, he contacted me right before the meeting as he was getting on a plane, his plane was delayed and therefore he couldn't get on the Zoom meeting. He wanted to uh, make sure that I wish everyone on his behalf, uh, Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I thank the council for that and on my end, I'd also like to wish all of our residents and everyone throughout the world Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Happy holidays and uh, you have nothing but a great and blessed New Year. Uh, in addition to that, I've got a question for the mayors, segue into that, but uh. Well, rougher, but anyways, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, I know you had made at one point the resolution for the audit. And I know you were in total support of the audit and as you are aware also, we had last. Week, last Tuesday, last Wednesday, we had a study session on the audit. And a- as you seen and I seen, and, and I was, I, I was and have been against the audit all along. I just felt we should go with Plant Moran and kick it up if we needed to, but that's another conversation. With that being the case, you were in that particular Zoom meeting as you recall. And based on the findings of the, uh, I think if I'm not mistaken, Reiman is it, uh, Reiman Brothers or Raymond something?
Re- Raymond, Raymond Robinson.
Yeah, Raymond Robinson, based on their findings, honestly, there was nothing in there that just absolutely blew me, blew my head. Like, oh my god, what they found out so far, but meanwhile, we spent two, three hundred thousand dollars on this. And it appears to be like we're continuing to spend money on this. The, the administration that was of question, and not that they're necessarily guilty, is, is, is gone now. Your administration is in place and I would like to ask you point blank. What have you put in place since you brought this resolution forward? Checks and balances to make sure there's not as much potential for um. Things to be done in the wrong way or accidentally in the wrong way or god forbid intentionally in the wrong way. What parameters have you put in place to make sure that this doesn't happen to our residents? And then, should we put it up there and talk about the fact that maybe this audit just ought to stop? Without us continuing to bleed money away, thank you. And I hate to put you on the spot, but I, I'm, I'm being blunt and direct.
Well, you never, you never put me on the spot, uh, Council Chair, brotem. Uh, this is actually a good question and uh, you know, I discussed this with a few uh, few other council members. And you know, briefly talked to you about it, so we have a, a person who's actually helping us prepare for the audit. And uh, I wanna address uh, something that Council Chair misled the council on a few items. But I, I'll wait till my turn to address those items when uh, when it's my turn to discuss that. But as far as for the audit, we actually, uh, the gentleman, uh, David is uh, is helping us with uh. A lot of, a lot of issues, we've uh, we've actually instituted, as you know, a, a lot of policies. Uh, and also uh, from the Compliance Director at the time, uh, Hassan Jamal. Uh, also the finance team, so we had a finance team that were looking at everything. So even though we were, uh, there was a, a lot of different initiatives going on. You know, from the get-go back in January, uh, we started looking at procedures. And uh, there was uh, just to give you an example, not to throw anybody under the bus, there was a company that's been doing years for, with the city for. Probably about eighteen to twenty years and they don't have a contract. So I stopped all of that stuff and I actually sent an email to all, everybody in the city, all the directors. And just advised them that any, anybody's doing business with the city, I have to look at the policies, we have to look at, make sure that. Every company has a contract with the city and there has to be a resolution. So with that, uh, we've created a, a lot of policies, you know, how to go on out for bids. And uh, there was some instances that we actually went out for bid, you know, several times, but we still didn't put it on the agenda. You know, we didn't give that contract to the individuals because there was only one bidder that was bidding on a particular contract. So with that, uh, we have a lot of procedures that we also, a lot of uh, uh, things that we put in place. To make sure even after, you know, different mayor comes in years later. That they, they, they have a set of procedures and we continue to visit these procedures and policies to make sure. That nobody uh, goes and deviates away from that and there's also, there's uh. Um, everybody's accountable and there's also transparency and especially with the funds. And as you, as you mentioned, I did write the resolution and I know the Council Chair wanted to put her name on there, just to put her name on there. So I'm the one who actually initiated that, that resolution because there was, I seen a lot of things when I used to do a lot of research. As you know, every, every council meeting we had, you know, I, I nitpick everything to death, you know, with uh, everything that was put in front of me. And so I've discovered a lot of issues and that's one of the reasons I put the resolution in place uh, for the, for the audit. Again, it wasn't a criminal investigation, it wasn't, you know, saying, you know, somebody was taking money or anything like that. I just wanted to see, there was, there was a lot of gaps and as you know more than anybody, one of the issues that I brought up. Um, there was uh, when I went ten years when I was on council, I went ten years back. And I looked at what Plant Moran had, you know, for findings and I kept see- seeing the same repeat findings. So when I was appointed, I started looking at all the findings that get, again, and I wanted to make sure that we don't have repeat findings. So now with Plant Moran, Plant Moran is doing an amazing job, so they've been helping us. And uh, so when I took over, we were already almost a year behind on everything. So I took over in January, as you know, and uh, there was nothing been done with paperwork since Ja- since uh, June of last year. So we're, we're working around the clock, you know, with the controller's office with David, you know, he's helping us with uh, prepare for the audit. So he's going all the way back to June of last year. So with that, there was a lot of uh, uh, issues, you know, trying to put together. And Plant Moran has been really helping us a lot trying to, um, you know, pretty much they came and did a pre-audit. They said, okay, well, you know, there's a lot of concerns and you know, when David came on board, you know, all these issues started, you know, coming to light. So we wanted to make sure. So we wanted to make sure a lot of policies are in place to make sure that we won't have repeat findings or some of the concerns. And I, like I promised you guys, you know, been, been on council myself, I wanted to make sure that I make your jobs easier. So when we present something, I've done all my due diligence, that everything, you know, is, you know, is pretty much kosher, everything is done the proper way. And so we separated a lot of accounts like they should have been, you know, restricted accounts. I know councilmen have brought up some concerns. You know, we made sure those were taken care of. So any council member that has an issue with something that I took note of, you know, I made sure that we put those in place. So when Plan Moran, they're actually in, in the process of an audit right now, it should be done, you know, shortly. I told them, have at it, you know, just go through everything. I, I need to know, like, just throw the book at us. I want to know everything, whatever is wrong. So we can pretty much fix everything right now. And so we don't drag it onto the next year or the following year. I hope that makes sense to you.
Yes, it does. So, so question to you now. Do you feel the audit should continue at this point?
Right now, I think, well, we, like, like I mentioned, I'm the one who wrote the resolution and I just, I made sure that everything that I had questioned with, I'm, I'm putting things in place right now to make sure that those issues don't occur. I know there's some, some other concerns that councilmen have brought up. So I'm gonna ask, once Plan Moran is done with this audit, so one of the new things that I'm doing, I'm gonna start doing a pre-audit on a monthly basis. So we can come through. And as you know, you know, I asked for that many, many years ago. I've asked that. So we want to do a pre-audit every, 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 every month. We gotta do an internal audit. And just to make sure everything is in place. And I want to go, I mean, that's one of the things that I did when I was a lead auditor for Boeing. And that's my, you know, one of my pet peeves is when, when you go and do an audit and somebody doesn't do a pre-audit, you know, just so it's like taking the auditor, you know, for, you know, for full. So I, myself, I, I'm, I'm, I'm making sure that there's an internal audit. It's gonna be done on a monthly basis. And also, I'm, I'm gonna go through and start auditing each department, department by department. And I'm gonna ask, you know, Plan Moran to also go at each department just to make sure that everything's done correctly. And as, and I mean, appointed in January, but right now, I'm, I'm going through, once we're done with the audit, we gotta go through and we gotta make sure that every department's been audited. And I know we have a lot of new directors, so I want to make sure whatever happened in the past, you know, everything is corrected. And my new directors, they've brought some procedures themselves. And as you know, you know, even the building, the building department is running more efficiently right now. And they're, they've done a lot of things. And even, you know, I know people complain about ordinance, but even ordinance, they have a lot of things that they're doing. And, you know, one thing, I'm not gonna throw anybody under the bus. But somebody brought to my attention that somebody from council, I won't mention names already, reached out to one of my ordinance people, telling them, hey, take it easy on the tickets. Which is, I mean, that's not acceptable because, you know, some council members that say, hey, you know, have at it, let's, let's make sure we clean our city. But you got some individuals that actually contact our ordinance because their cousin or whatever, you know, got a ticket and they're upset. So that's, you know, that's something, like I said, you know, I'm making every department accountable and they're doing everything they can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I like the pre-audit thing. That's, that's, that's a really good idea. I like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Constable.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My condolences also to Mike Blackburn and the loss of his mother. I never realized that Tony Blackburn was your mother. Very spirited, smart woman involved in Dearborn Heights for, and Dearborn for a long time. So my condolences. I want to wish everybody a happy holiday, happy new year. I know in the past, we always, the, the council filmed a greeting. And I don't know what happened this year, or maybe we're going to do that, but happy holidays again. You know, when I worked for a short time in Dearborn in, in the city attorney's office, I saw, I see the Dearborn Police Cars and every car, I believe it says one team. And I hope this coming year that we can all get on the same page and move forward. All the lawsuits some filed when the whole council didn't know a lawsuit was brought. A lot of the bickering, more than bickering. I, I hope we can put that behind us and move forward with the very important issues facing the city. Such as the audit, the finances, our directors, people with a good background and experience going forward. There are a lot of mechanisms in place to make a lot of decisions, actions, non-political, civil service and the like. And, and I really think we need to pay attention to that. I know our new mayor had talked before about having an ethics commission in the city, and I think that's something we definitely need. Thank you.
Councilman, oh, Constable, nope. Next, I will open it up to Mr. Blackburn.
Good evening. How, how are you doing tonight? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to give out my condolences to Councilman Muscat. I feel your pain. It's a tou- tough time. To everybody who has expressed condolences to me. Nowadays, there's a hundred ways to do it. I appreciate everybody for everything that they have done. To get back to Councilman Muscat here, Parkland Park, that is the only park that is staffed by the Building Maintenance Department. We have a hard, there's a sign on that park that says the park is only open from Memorial Day to Labor Day is when the Recreation Department schedules picnics for that park. Before that and after that, the only time it's used is for the soccer club and the Raiders Football Club. We have had a lot of problems with that park. The park is locked at night. We've had to replace four locks this year because people cut the chain on the locks and, and steal the locks. Those, those get pretty expensive. They cut, they take their four-wheelers out, out there on the grass and they really tear it up. We got a lot of, in the springtime, we have a lot of sod grass prepared to do. Also, because it's so secluded, about nine years ago, they broke into the bathrooms and stole all the cot, cophrall, the bathrooms, and that took about a month and thousands of dollars to replace. That's why we keep it locked. I have a hard time when it's open to staff that park because finding summer help the last half dozen years has been quite difficult. And we have to use a lot of my manpower, a lot of overtime for that staffing when we do not have it. And that's one reason why it's locked in the winter time. And there's no heat in the bathrooms and the bathrooms are winterized, the water is shut off, everything is drained. So there's no way you can even use the bathrooms there in the winter time. And if anybody has any other questions about that park, I don't want to take too much of your time. You can always call, e- e- email me and I'll get back to you and we can always talk about it. Thank you very much. Bye.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Yeah, I understand his frustration with that. But that park gets local, state and federal funds. How can you close the park? Okay. I understand you have problems and you have a sign up there for a certain time to a certain time. And I agree, the park could be closed at night, but just because you got a gate up there, it's not gonna stop vandals from going through there and doing anything. The park needs to stay open. It gets funded by tax dollars. My tax dollars, state tax dollars, federal tax dollars. We don't have a right to close that park. And just recently here, the Raiders got locked out of it. That's where they practice football. That's utterly ridiculous. And I'm not gonna, as a councilman, I'm not gonna stand for it. That park is to stay open. Or I will go to the state and to the county on it. That park will be open. That's simple as that. And, and, and we never have staffing there twenty-four hours or seven days a week during the summer. Cause I've been there in the summer. I don't see anybody there every day. So I understand the frustration that we have problems there, but it is a park for the people, period. And, and, and to, to get back with Mr. Abdullah, the, the, the audit was invaluable. And it should taught every single councilman or councilperson, past and present and in the future, don't take everything that somebody tells you is gospel. We gotta do our homework. You and I have served on a council. We had votes there, you and I, on budgets that we were relying to. And we didn't do our due diligence and try to find out and how to read those documents properly because we could have stopped the so that, 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 that audit was invaluable to all of us. We learned a lot from that audit. Okay. So, but that's my opinion on it. That could be done at a different time and day. Maybe you and I, Dave, can sit down and talk about that one day. We'll kick Sam Miller out of his cottage and we can just go there on his boat and talk about it.
Bill.
Okay.
Councilman Abdullah, you've already spoke, but you raised your hand.
That's fine. If, well, I, I just want to make sure for Mr. Blackburn is that the Dearborn Heights Raiders, Raiders is an organization that continues to use the, the park even up to at this particular point, because I've heard from different parents that did call me and say that we have no access to the park. I said, I don't know, I have no idea the why. I do see, see his point about safety and what have you, but like Councilman Muscat mentioned, if I'm gonna, if I'm me or whoever it is jumps the fence, I mean, people can always jump the fence and do whatever they choose to do, other than the four-wheelers. So we do have to give access to Dearborn Heights Raiders for their practices, for whatever they do for these Little League and JV football. Please, thank you. And I know he's a football fan, so I know he's, I run into him at the Lions games all the time. So I know he's a, he's a believer in, in giving them access for football for the, for the kids.
Lions, it's the Lions.
Wyatt.
Bassy, go ahead, please. Oh, I'm so, Council, I don't have you on here. Did you want to go?
And my video is not working. I don't know why.
Okay, I'll call on you after Mayor Bazey.
Okay.
So Councilman Proton Abdullah, so I did speak to Mr. Conrad. He's gonna provide the keys to the Raiders. So they, they'll have one. So Mr. Conrad, trying to get copies for the, the locks. So we should have that sometime this week. So we'll address that. And the other, I also want to offer my condolences, Mr. Blackburn and Councilman Muscat. And also what I wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. And if you don't call in by the next meeting, Happy New Year. And one of the things, Councilman Must, Constable said, I'm, you know, like, you know, no bickering. And again, I'm not gonna stoop to your level, Council Chair. You know, you've been nothing but toxic, you know, since.
I'm not gonna take bashing at this time. I'm not going to take that. I don't have to.
There is no need.
Thank you. Councilman Abdul Hawk, you're next.
Please, I, I, I really cherish the time I spent with you, whether I agreed with any one of you or disagreed. But I cherish those times. I cherish the memories we have together the last forty years. So please keep the good memories, keep the good relation. And believe me, we all can work together, even with, if we disagree on some things, we can work together for the benefit of the residents. Keep that in mind. I want to talk about the audit first. In twenty nineteen, resolution was passed and the audit was approved. There was in the resolution, I believe, that we formed subcommittee of three council members. It's called FAC, Forensic Audit Committee. Anybody knows who are the three members of that subcommittee? Nobody. I see that we, the city council, collectively, including myself, we failed miserably and we failed the residents in this audit. Because we did not follow up day by day the auditors and we enforced the charter and the ordinance of the city by forcing the previous administration and everybody else in this administration, including ourselves, to cooperate with the auditor. So the money we spent was worthwhile. And I did FOIA all the communications between all these elected officials, the controller and the treasurer. Because in, in the Raymond Audit Inform, I wanted to know what was going on behind, at least my back. Who talked to them? Who provided them with help? Who did not? Who did not, you know, do their job to make sure that they got the right papers, the right documents? And I was shocked myself that misinformation was passed, you know, to all of us at some times by, by different people. And I, I will tell the city council, the present and the future members, please do not believe anything until you see it and you hear it with your own eyes and ears and search for the truth and ask the questions, even somebody doesn't like them. Ask them. It doesn't matter who gets upset. The truth is more important. The residents are more important. So I would ask this council and the future members, please continue the audit, especially, especially the healthcare OPEV. The city is under hundred and seventy-one million dollars liability. Money was spent in all, every year, there was five hundred to six hundred thousand left over. Nobody until today can tell me what happened to that money. Was it carried on for next year? Or was the next year expenses was deducted or reduced by five or six hundred thousand? Or every year the residents were paying between five to six hundred dollars in supposedly administrative fees, which never was spent, except it was added to the general fund to make the, basically, the budget look like it has surplus. The same thing for Act Three Forty-Five. We need to know if the pension board is following the contract. Who's monitoring? Who's looking to see if they doing the right thing? If they paying the right things? If the residents are not being paid more than they suppose in contributions? Then we need to audit the drop program. And that brings me to nine F. If we can afford to give the retiree in the police and fire and guarantee them five percent on their drop program. Shame on us if we cannot give the general government employees at least five percent. Some of the members of the drop programs made return on their investment between an interest and return on investment. And this number maybe will shock some of you. Between fifty thousand to hundred and thirty thousand dollars return on their account last year. So we need to audit these things to see the burden on the residents in the future. Can the city afford this kind of things we give away? And it is really in the hands of our mayor to look at these numbers and to make sure that all the giveaway which the previous administration gave away can be stopped and can be controlled. And I am not against giving decent pension to the police and fire on the contrary. But I am against all the giveaways which the previous administration did. And I'm asking you, Mayor, please, you are in the driver's seat. And I'm asking you, Mayor, please, you are in the driver's seat. Look at these numbers. Look how you can fix all these things if you can fix them. And don't worry, you got elected with a huge margin and huge mandate. It's in your hands. Please, look at it and do the right thing for the public. And I wanna wish every residence in this city, Happy Holidays. And Mr. Blackburn and my friend Ray, my condolences to both of you.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Also their mothers. I understand I lost both my mother and father during the month of December. And it's the hardest month to lose anyone that close to you. Um, and I'd like to wish all the residents Merry Christmas. At this time, I will open it up to community announcements. I do have Mike Blackburn up here. Go ahead, please.
Hi, this is just really quick. I, hi, I had moved myself, but, um, just back to the park for a quick second. Um, we had changed the locks because, um, the fourth lock this year was stolen. The chain was cut and the lock was stolen. And we had just put a lock on it for the winter time. Uh, me and the supervisor that I work with, we are devising a plan that we were talking to Director Conrad about and have a meeting with him as to what to do because, um, replacing four or five locks every year gets quite expensive. And after we did that, we were go, go to the re, the recreation director with our plan. Um, what happened was an unfortunate incident with, uh, the Raider Raiders football. But I was there within an hour to unlock the gate for them. Um, it probably won't happen again. I seem to have a good relationship with the soccer club and the football club. Um, we have always given them everything they need and, um, and we're gonna find a way to stop this problem that we are having right now. And that is it. Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas. Good night.
Next I have Chief Myers.
Yeah, thank you, Council Chair. Um, just wanted to touch base with all the residents. And, uh, the last week and a half here in our city and across our area, it's been a pretty scary time for parents and for children when it comes to our schools. Um, we do not live in a bubble here in Dearborn Heights. Um, we've had to experience some of the same heartache, some of the same, uh, tragedy, the feelings. But we've also had to experience the threats and the, um, hoaxes. And I just want, uh, a residence to know and the council to know, um, our four districts, um, are great districts. From the superintendents to the teachers, to the bus drivers, to the custodians. The best interest of our children is in everybody's, um, best interest and, and that's their intentions. We're working very closely with all the school districts to mitigate any threat that comes in. Um, they're taking all those threats very seriously and doing their, their part to make our school safe. And the police department working with the Wayne County Prosecutor is also following up on the credible threats to hold people accountable, um, for their actions. So, um, there's a lot of nervous parents, a lot of scared kids. Um, just know that you, the police officers have been in and around the schools and all, all of our districts and our private schools. And, um, I can't express my appreciation for all the districts and what they're doing to protect our children and to work with the police department to make our school safe. So, uh, when you see a teacher, when you see a principal, a bus driver, thank them for what they're doing for your kids because, uh, they're hanging in there, uh, not thinking of themselves. They're thinking of everybody that we put in those schools. So we're working together and, uh, we'll get through it together. That's it. Happy, uh, holidays and, uh, see everybody in two weeks.
Next I have Hassan Jamal.
Yeah, good afternoon. Some, some just, uh, house cleanup. Uh, the resolutions that said, this is for the clerk, that says open receipt warrant. Open receipt means that those particular warrant payment doesn't have to go back to the council because it include the total payment. Uh, number two, city council, uh, does not do uh, transfer of money from revenue to appropriation. Uh, by just, uh, saying that in a resolution, it has to be a budget amendment. So Director Conrad can use whatever down payment, uh, him and the mayor decide for buying the truck and the revenue coming from the insurance company will be going to the water department revenue jar ledger account. It has nothing to do with appropriation. When we receive revenue, it goes to the revenue account in the budget. It doesn't finance an expenditures account, two different transaction in account. With that, thank you and have a great day.
Next we have Director Dishroom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to give, uh, an update to city council on what's been going on in the ordinance. So I'll keep it as brief as I possibly can. Uh, this is going back the last couple of months of October and November. Um, in October, we issued a hundred and eighty-four tickets. On November, we issued eighty-seven tickets. The last two months, the department has responded to approximately one thousand ordinance complaints. Uh, this does not include annual complaints. Uh, we have not stopped writing tickets, uh, contrary to rumors that are going around, as you can tell by the stats I just gave. We have been working on weekends when possible, uh, focus on work being done without permits, which is, has been brought up several times. It's kind of a, a big issue. So we're focusing on that. Uh, when we do find work being done without permits, they are getting double permit fees and or tickets. Just so you know, just to try to get our point across. Uh, the, uh, department also continues to focus on blight issues and has completed several court orders or received compliance on other, uh, court orders after the notices were posted. Um, I'd like to thank the, uh, fire department, uh, uh, Chief Rogan, Matt Smiths and Adam, uh, for their assistance. Uh, last Thursday with the ordinance matter in the north end, uh, we asked for their assistance and they responded, uh, very rapidly. We deeply appreciate that. Like to thank my department for their continued efforts. Um, it's been a rough year all around, uh, to say the least. I'd like to, uh, congratulate all the recently sworn in elected officials. Um, I'd also like to thank Councilman Wenzel for his, uh, his support that he just recently offered. Uh, clearly we're shorthanded in the ordinance department. Hopefully moving into the new year, we can address some of our staffing issues and hopefully work in a positive manner to get things accomplished in the city. Uh, I would like to express my condolences to Ray Muscat and Mike Blackburn. Um, I know you must be, uh, struggling and having a difficult time, but my thoughts and prayers are with both you, both you guys. Uh, I think that's about it. I just wanted to wish everybody safe and happy holiday and, uh, take care of yourselves. Stay safe. Thank you, Madam Chair. I yield the rest of my time.
Do I have any more public announcements? Community announcements? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the disclosure and we'll move on. Oh, Councilman? Well, let's, okay. Read the disclosure. I'm sorry. I thought you wanted, we were gonna call in, um, Councilman Wenzel. Um, prior to that, I would like, do you wanna do that? Hold on. I think he just wants to be unmuted. Oh, you got him?
I'll, I'll, I'll wait for a public comment or whatever it is.
Okay.
But I'm gonna ask for like fifteen minutes. I'm just kidding.
I'll give you thirty, okay? Okay, ready? Okay, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year as well. And my condolences, the clerk's office condolences to Mike Blackburn and his family and Councilman Muscat and his family as well. You're welcome. Okay, so members of the public shall have a reasonable opportunity to be heard at any regular meeting of the council or at any special meeting of the council on matters within the council's jurisdictions. Members of the public may address the council under the rules established by the council, including this policy. Members of the public shall not comment in general during a meeting to participate in a meeting unless specifically permitted by council to do so. Uh, although the scope of things that may be spoken about under comments is extremely broad. A person's speech and actions while addressing the council during the comment section of the public comment are not without limits. In addition to any other applicable legal requirements, a person shall not engage in profane, obscene or criminal speech or actions while addressing the council during the comment section or a public comment. Moreover, a person shall not commit a breach of peace while addressing the council during the comment section of public comments. The procedure for addressing the council during the comment section of public comments shall be as follows. Any member of the public who wants to address the council shall begin doing so by stating his or her name, the street here she lives on and the municipality in which here she resides. He, here she shall have up to three minutes to address the council. A member who violates these rules or any other applicable rules established by the council may be directed by the council chair to comply with the rules. If the member of the public continues to violate the rules, the council chair, chat, council chair may direct him or her to end his or her comments. A member of the public shall comply with the council chair's orders. A member of the public shall not be excluded from a meeting otherwise open to the public, except for a breach of peace actually committed at the meeting. I'm gonna open up the public comment. The limit is three minutes. Go ahead, Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Tom Wenzel, Two Lane Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. My family and I, uh, last week attended the Dearborn Heights tree lighting ceremony. And it was a really a nice event, a lot of activities to do for the kids. Um, my hat goes off to the, uh, Parks and Recreation Department and Director Kim Lawrence, Lauren Sell. Um, and I'm so happy to see the golf course being utilized. Uh, we've owned it for several years now. And basically we, we haven't had any activities there. And in the last few months, six months or so, we've had several events throughout the summer and now this and some other things happening. Um, she's doing a great job. Uh, her department is doing a great job, the, with the assistance, you know, the police department coming in there for crowd control and traffic control. It's a great venue and I'm glad to see that the city's taking, taking advantage of this and, um, it's, it's, it's a, it's a great time for, for the families is, is what I'm trying to really get at. So all the activities we've had there so far, you know, the five or six or seven of them, whatever it was, it's been great family activities. And, uh, I'm glad to see that happening in Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next I have Director Lauren Sell.
Um, I'm Kim Lawrence, all Director of Parks and Recreation, five, five, two, seven, Heather Lane, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County. Um, I would like to address an issue that has occurred in the last few city council Zoom meetings. It has been the council chair's longstanding policy not to allow bashing of other people during the meetings. Yet I have been slandered by someone who is a coward hiding behind the name tired of P and R director lies. I emailed the council chair after the first time this happened, stating that I felt it was unprofessional to allow people to enter the Zoom council meetings with a bogus name that slanders someone. I remember this happening to a council person and it wasn't tolerated. City council should adopt a policy that meeting attendees using bogus slanderous names should not be accepted into the meetings. Obviously, this person isn't competent enough in his or her own self to enter the meetings using their own name.
I agree. I saw that and I didn't appreciate either, but there's nothing we can do because it's a public meeting. When we have it in a public forum, we don't know what anybody's name is. When they all walk into the council chambers, nobody has a name and it's unfortunate. I agree. We need to come up with some kind of solution because I don't like it either. I've seen a lot worse than that even. I mean, stuff that really shouldn't be on there.
For a Zoom meeting, you can control that. You can adopt a policy. And you see the meeting or you see the name when you, uh, let the person in. So you can stop it for a Zoom meeting. It shouldn't be tolerated. It's unprofessional.
Council Miyaki, would you like to weigh in on that?
I, I think it'd be questionable as, uh, you mentioned, Council Chair, to end up, uh, denying access to a meeting, uh, under the Open Meetings Act, uh, based on a name or something along those lines. Uh, it may be unprofessional, but people can come in. I think we all remember a particular individual who, um, made reference to bowel movements on a T-shirt. Um, I think some of us probably do remember specifically that person could not be ejected or kept out of the meeting. That's not a breach of peace. You know, so that there's a real question here under the First Amendment and the Open Meetings Act about how much we can end up doing with respect to that. If someone came in with a shirt saying the same thing, would we deny access? I don't think so. I think we would, uh, violate the Open Meetings Act and the First Amendment if we did so.
Well, what about, since they're slandering me, obviously, and everyone is aware of that and knows that, um, what about me finding out who the person is so that I can file a lawsuit against him for slander? I mean, am I, do I have a right to get the person's name, the person's actual name?
Well, as I've often said in the past, my job is to give legal advice to all city officials, but I represent the city. Um, and, uh, that is, I think, something that you should end up posing to your own attorney, if you have one, as opposed to me addressing as a comment.
I will do that then. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Blackwell?
Hello, yes. My name is, uh, Charles Blackwell, Farmington Hills, Michigan. I would like to state that I'm just gonna use Gary Miyaki as an example because he's a city attorney, just how James Allen is a city attorney. Let's say, for example, Gary Miyaki responded to a citizen and stated, God meant for you to get shot and paralyzed and you will never walk again. What would this city council body do then? Would you punt on Gary Miyaki's job status and say, well, let's kick this can down the road months or possibly a year or so later? Probably heard. Secondly, James Allen was on this meeting all night long and he did not comment to clear or defend his own name. And that is very telling. James Allen could have very well spoke tonight because he was on this meeting all night and did not say one word. Uh, thirdly, Mayor Bazey election campaign was based on being transparent with city government business. However, I have filed two FOIA requests seeking emails and text messages with Mayor Bazey and James Allen. Mayor Bazey on two different occasions from himself and his chief of staff have denied my FOIA request seeking those emails with him discussing James Allen emails towards me. Mayor Bazey should come clean and produce those emails to show the public what he is talking with James Allen about. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next I have Nicole. I'm sorry, Buchman?
Buckman.
Buckman, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Nicole Buckman, Academy Street, Dearborn Heights. I am one of those employees, almost twenty-five years this Thursday, that did write you guys an email about agenda item nine F, I believe it was. I just wanted to say that if the commission could see the importance of bringing up salaries to, you know, compensate with local communities and inflation, I would surely hope that administration would offer that same to the union members when they do decide to hold another negotiation meeting. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next I have Sam. Go ahead, please.
Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Three topics I would like to talk about this evening. First, I would like to congratulate Mr. Abdullah. Never knew he opened the second location for his meetings. We got used to his living room and out of a sudden today, we know he has an office and he's doing consultation in his office. I mean, enough is enough. I believe people have told you their opinion. Election have proven enough. I mean, enough is enough. I believe people have told you their opinion. Election has proven enough that.
Okay, we're not gonna bash, please. Let's keep it nice. It's the holiday season.
And that's not bashing. And you, you, you can, you have no right to come me off. It's my turn to speak.
As long as you're polite, I will allow you to speak. If you go any further, I will cut you off.
You have no right to come me off. I have the right to speak, man. I believe that people did prove to you, like, they are sick and tired of all the baloney about, uh. So please put a stop to it.
Sorry, you're bashing. I'm not gonna allow it. Any other further comment? Okay, do I hear a motion to end the meeting?
Move to, to adjourn.
Or?
Or by Councilman Costin, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, the ayes have it. Have a good night, everyone, and Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.